Meeting in the Tiverton Town Council, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the sovereign republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Edwards?
Here.
Counselor Demidaris?
Here.
Counselor Burke?
Here.
Counselor Viera?
Here.
Counselors Perry and Janik are absent?
Yeah, Counselor Janik will be here as soon as she possibly can. She's on her way. She keeps texting me.
She's not driving, is she?
At this time, I'd like to bring up something that happened in Tiverton this morning at four o'clock. We lost a very true citizen of Tiverton, Rhode Island, Captain Joe Pusica. He served on the Tiverton Fire Department until 2019, which was his retirement. We tried to figure it out today. So he served for 25 years, but he was also a volunteer before that. So I think we all figured out he has served the town of Tiverton for 30 years. It was a sudden death. It was very devastating to those who love him and know him. Joe is a kind, true person. I was at the fire department this morning, and I heard some funny stories about Joe. Nothing bad at all. Joe was just loved by everyone, and we all will miss him. Joe was a true friend to me and to Captain, well, Captain Cametto right now, who is also our acting chief. Craig stayed at the hospital all night last night with his wife Gina and notified me at four o'clock this morning that things went very badly. So on behalf of the Tiverton Town Council and me personally, I'd like to give condolences to his wife Gina, his two children, the Tiverton Fire Department. After Joe left us, he worked at Tiverton, he worked at St. Anne's Hospital as a paramedic for many years, but did it two to three times a week. After he left, I actually was one of his preceptors when I worked in the emergency room with Joe. He was one of the best paramedics I've ever trained. So at this point, I'd like a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We'll continue. And I'll have to tell you that if Joe's watching right now, he's really mad at me for doing this because he was that kind of a person that would be really mad at me right now. All right, consent agenda. Approval of Town Council minutes, May 23, 2022, regular meeting, May 23, 2022, executive session, Counselor Perry and Viera absent for both. June 6, 2022, special meeting, Counselor Perry abstaining, absent. Counselor, June 6, special executive meeting, Counselor Perry abstaining, absent. Acknowledged receipt of minutes from boards, commissions, and committees, Economic Development Commission Three, Historic Preservation Advisory Board Three, Dog Park Advisory Committee One, SOA Advisory Committee Three, Board of Canvases One, Financial Town Hearing One, FTR and Personnel Change Advisory Committees Five. Acknowledged receipts of reports, Town Administrator, Department's monthly report, May 2022, Town Administrator, Police and Fire Department overtime reports, May 2022. Acknowledged receipts of correspondence, Paul Rizzoli, Rhode Island Association of Conservation Commissions, letter encouraging Conservation Commission and/or tree warning to attend the Land and Water Conservation Summit. Received treasures warrant, Town Administrator response letter to Annette Farrell, questions related to Abigail Estates, Vicki Richmond, letter in opposition to propose season gas station, referred to Planning Board, Gail Lawrence, letter in opposition to propose season's gas station, referral to Planning Board, Vicki Reaver, letter committee, letter to recognize DPW efforts on behalf of the Little Commission Committee. Would any of the councils like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President?
Yes.
Item A1 and item B2, please.
Donna, B7. Anyone else? Like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of A1, B2, and B7.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Counselor Burke?
So A1 is actually minor, and Joe, and I apologize, I meant to catch you earlier on this, earlier today. Page six, the, under General Business, the third bold set, you have, it says, it's a typo, it's Harbor Commission, should be Harbor Commission. Motion to have the councilor work with the, okay? That's all for that. So would you want that?
No, let's do the next one.
And then the other one, B2. So on their February 22 minutes, item number two, and I don't see Sue, I was, hopefully she was going to be here, but it says, "We voted to add the term 'Tiverton is a preserved American community' to all our official communications and have the webmaster added to the front page of the town's website." So I just asked the administrator to locate if they're talking about just the historic commissions, preservation advisory boards, communications, and obviously anything on the town website would need to go through the normal approval process for the town website. And if it's their page, that might be what she's talking about, but I just, it's not clear there. And then also on there, number four, it states the Brayton Homestead. So this is about demolition of historic structures, structures. The Brayton Homestead will be demolished by another solar company. We will insist that an archaeological survey be done of the house, the surrounding location, and/or mid-in. The board is to be notified and members to be present when such work is done. I just want to understand, is that within their purview? I don't necessarily disagree with it. I just want to understand.
So if it's within their purview, it'd be something the Planning Board had authorized as part of their licensing or permitting this project to be done. I don't know that. I'd have to go through all those minutes to find out whether or not this was subject to...
Or just ask Sue if that...
Oh, still at the planning board whether or not.
Okay. And then on the second set of minutes, March 16, again, it's the same thing, same item number six about the demolition. And that's it? Okay.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve for A1 or B2.
So moved.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Donna?
Yeah, I just want to have it.
For B7.
All right, yeah, B7, just a little separately on it.
Oh, okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve for B7?
So moved.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor? Against? Opposed? Five one. Did we receive any public comments? We did, didn't we? Mark Pleibden, is this about the parking?
Yes.
You want to wait till we get to that agenda? Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, public hearings. Arts Artesian Festival, Alyssa Wood, consideration of sound ordinance for arts and artesian festival at Mill Pond Shops, Tiverton Four Corners, 3980 Main Road on July 16, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and request approval of special event. This has been continued several times. We did receive a correspondence that I just read from Alyssa that said she's unable to make it again this evening and would like us to just forget this.
I think she said she'd try again next year.
Try again next year, yeah.
Next year or next meeting?
Next year.
Next year. Oh, I'm sorry. Because I...
Did you get that?
So this has been cast.
Silister Chris, so he says it. Yeah, I think you all, well, maybe I'm the only one that got that. Anna Duncan and Matthew Ferrara, considerations sound variance for wedding at 86 Indian Point Road on September 24, 2022, from 4:30 to 10:00 p.m., and request approval of a special event permit. Is Anna and Matthew here?
Here, yes, here.
Come on up.
They've been waiting patiently for hours.
We did this really quick, though. If you were here last meeting, you would never have gotten hurt.
It was dark.
So you, is this your residence?
It is Matthew's aunt's and uncle's residence.
Okay. And it's a wed, it's a wedding?
It's, my daughter Anna is marrying Matthew Ferrara.
Okay.
And Linda Hall and John Hall live at Indian Point Residence and have offered the backyard, basically, after we failed with the meeting house situation.
So you were one of the people?
Yes, yes, and...
Well, you know, you might, it might be a beautiful wedding, a better wedding after all.
There a couple of times since then, and we think it will be better, actually. And Matt's grandparents...
Oh, it's my...
So that's the reason they wanted to have it here in the first place.
And the parking? I'm looking at...
On Penny Pond Road?
Yep.
Yeah, we have to park on Penny Pond Road, we understand. And we estimate the number of cars that will actually travel to the wedding and back to wherever they're staying is probably maybe 10. Everybody else will be shuttled from either the hotel or from the Airbnbs.
We've hired a van. Perfect. Any questions from the council? Like to entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the wedding on 9/24/22 at 86 Indian Point Road as the alternative source.
Yeah.
I would like to apologize to Anna and Matthew that this happened. It was very unfortunate, but I'm so glad you found an alternative to this.
Thank you. It was a little rough at first.
Yeah, I can only imagine. I have daughters. I can only imagine what this must have been like for you.
And we appreciate your good humor about this.
I know I need a second. I saw you looking at Todd saying, yeah, Todd was watching me.
Is that a motion for the sound variance?
Consideration of sound, right?
Oh, yeah.
Consideration of the sound.
You know what? I, this is...
Approval of special event permit.
Right. But this is a public hearing, so I need to open it up to the public.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I'm really tired tonight. It was a rough day. Anyone here would like to comment on this subject? Anyone from the public? Okay, I'll close the hearing. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? What?
Sound and special events.
Sound and special, well, we just clarified that. All those in favor? Congratulations. I hope everything goes really well.
Madam President, can we go back to Alyssa Wood? I think we have to do...
Motion to withdraw that because there was an application fee filed in advertising.
Really? Did she pay an application fee?
Yeah.
But do we give it back to her?
I don't think you need to.
So what do you want me to do?
Motion to withdraw the application.
So I'm going back to 6A. I'd like to entertain a motion to withdraw the application of Alyssa Wood.
I guess to accept the withdrawal of the application.
Accept the withdrawal.
So I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal of Alyssa Wood for the sound variance request for arts and artisan festival at Mill Pond Shops at Tiverton Four Corners, 3980 Main Road on July 16 of this year, from 10 to 4, and approval of a special event permit, with the understanding that we will not be remitting any funds.
Second.
Was that email you got a request to withdraw?
Alyssa, did, did this copy of the email go to the council?
No.
Here you go.
No, I mean, so...
So I'll read it.
Yeah.
Please, please be, we asked her to come to the meeting, and she responded, "Hi, Donna, I will not be able to make it. I work most Mondays. You can take us off the agenda. We will try again next year."
Next year.
So I have a...
So you have a second?
So I'm going to open the public hearing. I didn't think I had to do this since she didn't show up, but I still do. Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. Any comments on Alyssa withdrawing her request? Any further comments? I'll close the public hearing. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? Unanimous. Recreation Commission, Chair Stuart, Bill Phelan, consideration of sound variance for Tiverton Summer Concert Series at Bogomash Park Pavilion on July 14, the 21st, the 28th, August 5, 12th, and 19th, main date August 25, from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m., and request approval of a special event permit. Now, Stu, you confused me when I first saw this because I thought we were doing this on Friday nights, but in July it's Thursday.
In July it's Thursday nights.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Yeah, we were originally looking at Thursday across the line. It seems like it made more sense.
All right. Would you like to talk about this to us?
Sure. Just really quickly, I think a lot of other communities have community concert and events that are family focused. I know for a long time, my family would go to one that was held at Sweetberry Farms. Bristol does a great job with it, Newport, so East Greenwich, I mean, you can go on and on. Figured it was a good opportunity to bring people together. Our intent would be to have about a two to two and a half hour concert that would bring people together, completely free to the community. We would work with the already approved vendors for food trucks to be able to set up some shop and provide food. We do recognize that one of the things, because we haven't done this before, is that there may be a potential crunch for parking. We're aware of that. We're going to see what we can do with it and also potentially talk to the library about that.
We also have the library space.
Yeah. So I think we'll be okay in speaking with Chief Jones initially. We would also plan to have an officer there for each of the concerts, but we want to take a shot at and see what the interest would be. The intent of any of the acts is to have them really, again, be family friendly. We're looking to make this something everybody can come together and do in an area of town that we want to be able to make probably more central than what a lot of recreation's been able to do lately, so.
Well, it's probably a better choice than Grinnell's right now because of the parking.
Well, and the sound will carry better, too. I mean, and I don't mean that in a way that it's going to get overly loud. It's just with the wind, you never know what you're going to get at the beaches.
Any questions from the council?
Graham Nash is going to be in Lowell this year. Can you get him down here?
I'll work on it right after.
I actually, I actually know some of the bands that Stu has already looked at, and we have them played singing out against hunger, and I don't think anyone will be disappointed at all with their performances. Any questions from the council? I'd like to open the public hearing. Any questions or comments from?
How you doing?
Hi.
Mark Clumpton, 12-point view drive, fully support it. I know he's worked hard on it, so I think we, we think it'll be a good time.
All right. And if you know any bands that would be willing to perform for us, call Stu.
Perfect.
Okay. Anyone else?
Do the variants come from the liquor license?
Is somebody speaking? I don't...
Do the variants come from the liquor license?
Uh, no. John, I barely saw... No, he's actually lost some hair since the last time I saw him. All right. Any other comments? I'd like to close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the councilor for Stu? I'd entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion for approval of a sound variance for the Tiverton Summer Concert Series at Bogomash Park Pavilion on July 14, 21, 28, August 5, 12, 19, rain date August 25, from 5:30 to 9, and request, and a special event permits for those dates.
Second.
Is that good, Todd? I know you're watching me tonight.
I didn't screw that one up.
I do have one curiosity question.
Well, let's have a second, then I'm gonna...
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Why only one rain date?
Yeah, I know. He's just hoping it only rains once.
Honestly, it kind of came down to available dates, and also Bogomash has a number of leagues that play there, so there's an issue with scheduling as well. So we'll just have to facilitate.
So you're going to have Battle of the Bands?
During the agenda meeting, I just thought that you just thought it was only going to rain once, and I was with you on this.
Rain can't fall only in these.
I was like, okay.
So if it rains, it's a washout unless, except for August 25.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll take a look at it. I mean, I...
We may be able to do something different.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Stu.
Should I just stay right here?
Yeah. This reminded me of last week. Consideration of proposed amendments to Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Chapter 78, traffic in vehicles, 7861 non-residential parking penalties for violation of Article and Section 7885, parking prohibited from 10:00 p.m. to sunrise.
So just very quickly, the Section 7885 is what has been added. 7861 was just the modification to include that addition. So because it originally said 7884 was the end on it?
Yep.
We added on. So the fee structure is one that was already in place, and we're just extending it for parking between 10:00 p.m. and sunrise on the following streets, which is what it currently, the ordinance currently says that it's closed during, even if it's not completely shut down. So this is just putting, the ability to put a fine against an ordinance that's already on the books, and it was one that Chief Jones supported. So it does not, I know that there had been a discussion before relative to restricting hours for residents. This is not related to that. This is purely just putting a fee structure in association with an existing ordinance on the books.
Any questions from the council? Mike?
So 7885 is...
The new addition.
Okay, because then online it's not updated and it's reserved.
That's what I asked.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Any comments from the audience? Hi.
Hi again. Sorry, I make, I know you got a heavy agenda afterwards and Celtics games and many other things, so the, how does this affect Fogland Beach, this ordinance?
It would just allow for people that are parked there during the time that the ordinance already says that they're not supposed to be parked there to be fined.
To be fined.
So there's, there's no recourse at the current time.
You're two for two tonight. It's perfect. Thank you.
Well, I thought you'd be happy. That's why I was surprised you came out, but yeah, so this, this, this does affect Fogland, as we have discussed at the last meeting. Anyone else from the audience? Come on, Tom. Over here, Tom, so I can see you. I know who you are and everything, but...
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment that maybe it might be a little bit too strict. There could potentially be some things that perhaps a town group might want to sponsor, like an astronomical night or something like that down there. And I would just ask that maybe there'd be something to say that at the, somebody could override this if there's an actual desire for something that might benefit the town. Making it absolutely prohibited during that time would outlaw those areas. And some of them have very nice views to the horizon, which is good for that type of activity.
I don't know if I'm wrong about this, but if there was a special event, we could approve that, correct?
Could waive it.
Yes.
Could waive the...
Because to tell you the truth, the new idea is to have a volunteer night down at Fogland for the volunteers in Tiverton.
I don't disagree with it. I know there's a lot of trouble with things that happen at night there, and that's the intent.
And I'm going to speak for the neighbors. They would have no problem with a controlled kind of event where people are there, there's a time limit, people leave. If you're coming to see the stars or if you're coming for a volunteer night, it's very much different than what goes on there.
So Tom, let me ask you this. Something that you're describing, like we just approved the wedding, it's planned well in advance. Something like you're describing, is that something that you're kind of hoping that the weather's going to be good, and then you set it up? How much planning in advance would there be? Would there be enough time to come before us for a special event permit?
I think it would be like we just heard there'd be rain dates or bad weather dates or cloudy weather dates or something like that. But I just think when you see just prohibited, it just makes you a little bit nervous that there might not be a legal way to do something that might benefit residents in the town down in that area.
No, I think that would be something that we would permit. The problem is, we, as, I don't know if you're aware, but there's people there very late at night.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Parking, so...
No, I don't have any problem with that. Just, we need a little bit of an out sometimes.
Yeah, and there would be an out.
Okay, thank you.
There would be an out for any special event.
Parking's already private there. Yeah, just the parking, you can't park there anyway right now.
Right, but they are anyway. But now there's a fine. I don't know if it's going to stop people, but at least... At least there's a mechanism now to fine them, and maybe if we do, then there'd be less and less people doing it. Anyone else from the public? All right, I'd like to close the public hearing. Any further questions from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Chapter 78, Traffic in Vehicles, Section 7861, non-residential parking penalties for violation of Article and Section 7885, parking prohibited between 10:00 p.m. and sunrise.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? Thank you, Stu. Consideration of proposed amendment to Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 78, Traffic in Vehicles, Section 7837, stop streets regarding Lynn Road, North Christopher Road, South Christopher Road, as recommended by the police department. Chris, you going to take this one?
I will. I do know the police department did take a look at this. They weighed in on it, and they've made recommendations that would justify that the no parking be taking place on, there's a memo from John Ledoux to the chief outlining exactly where these stop signs should be.
Any questions from the council? I'd like to open the public hearing. Any questions from the audience? Any concerns or questions from the audience? I'd like to close the public hearing. Anything from the council right now? No. I'd entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 78, Traffic in Vehicles, Section 7837, at stop streets regarding Lynn Road, North Christopher Road, South Christopher Road, as recommended by the police department. And if anybody doesn't recall this, it winds up by Ranger School.
Yes.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? Unanimous. We can right through this tonight. Yeah, watch this. I'm going to jinx this, definitely. Consideration of proposal to rename. Here we go. Spruce Street, Maple Street, Highland Street, Hemlock Street, and Beet Street, as recommended by the planning board. All right, so the planning board sent us their recommendation, as we discussed last meeting. It's Paper Road A, Paper Road B. I don't think we should name them Paper Roads.
Denise's Way?
It goes all the way to E. There's a joke that I wanted to name one of these Denise's Way, but I've been opposed and told I can't do that. So what is your pleasure? Now, which one am I going to make the motion on? You know what I'm talking about, right?
Hemlock Street.
I do.
Hemlock Street. Okay. So all these roads are really paper roads, except for Hemlock Road. Am I right, Joe?
That's correct.
They've been trying to get this, so this road cannot be A, B, C, or D. This is a resident. I'm going to make a motion that we name it Costa Way. It was originally owned by the Costas. There's family members that live on this street. They've said jokingly that they wanted it, that, but as, as you know, many streets in town are named by the developers for their sons, their children. That road I would like to name Costas Way.
That's a process question?
Sure.
Because of the way this is advertised, should we have one motion for everything? That, that be inclusive in it?
That, yeah, that's what I think, yeah. But I just want, if anyone else would like to name these roads anything different, I do, the request of the town clerk was to take paper away from it, which I agree with. of the town clerk was to take Paper away from it, which I agree with, and just name them Road A, Road B. Road C, Costa's Way, and Road E.
I'm fine, but I thought one of them should have been No Way, and the other cross one should have been Denise's Way, but that's-
I wanted to name it. I was really pushing for Denise's Way, but it wasn't going over well with everyone, so-
Now the deputy's going to be after me tomorrow, but-
What we really were going to do is make a fake sign and put Denise's Way and Costa's Way.
Don't tell anybody.
Just joking to them, but that's what I was going to do. I mean, it's odd to name roads A, B, C, and D, but they're really Paper Roads. They're not really roads.
Yeah.
And the problem, and the reason why we're renaming these roads is because there's other roads named this in town.
And more importantly, there is one road that somebody did develop a house on and for 911 purposes. There has to be a legal address to it. So that's where the controversy came.
Okay, so do we have any discussion from the council?
I like Costa's Way.
Okay, so would someone like to make the motion? You want me to?
I'll make a motion that we rename the following streets in this manner. Spruce Road to be renamed Paper Road A.
Road A, not Paper Road.
I'm sorry.
Can you, can you make it A Road?
A Road.
Rather than-
A Road, B Road.
Or A Street.
Because Road is the actual street type.
Okay, we'll do that. So, I'm going to start my motion over again.
Joe has been very concerned about this.
And it might make more sense like A Street, B Street. So it's up to you.
No, A Street.
So, motion is that we rename the following roads in the following manner. What is now Spruce Road will be A Street. What is now Maple Road will be B Street. What is now Highland Road will be C Street. What is now Hemlock Road will be Costa's-
Way.
Way. And what is now Beach Road will be renamed E Street. And this is within the Beach Development?
It's all different development.
No, it's within the Stafford-
Within the Stafford-
Stafford Road.
Yeah, Stafford Heights.
Stafford Heights. Stafford Heights East.
East, the section somewhere.
So is a post-trinket coming to E Street?
Yes. So if I follow that, somebody can second it.
Somebody second this, please.
I'll second it, but they weren't roads, they were called streets here.
Okay.
That's what he called them, A Street, B Street.
And we just did Costa's Way, just- All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Public hearing, public hearing.
Oh, public hearing. Yeah, there's too many of them lately. Anyone out there like, like to speak on naming the streets? Anyone in the audience like to comment? I'll close the public hearing. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Bought a licensing John Cudero Megan Alcudero Memorial Foundation. If you don't want to, are you all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I heard you had this that's acting up.
Request special event approval for the 14th Annual Miles for Megan Bike Ride/Walk Event on September 24, 2022, from 7:00 to 3:00 o'clock, subject to all meeting requirements. For those who don't know it, this is Megan's dad, John Cudero, who comes to us every year.
Hello, and thank you.
And now he has a disc problem.
Yes, I can't see, I can't walk, I can't hear.
We used to be young, hanging around together. You know that, John, right? All right, we do like-
All right, so this is our annual fundraiser for the Megan Cudero Memorial Foundation, foundation that we established after the death of our daughter from acute myelogenous leukemia 14 years ago. 14 year anniversary was the 5th of this month, last week. So we will have our annual bike ride, bicycle ride, not motorcycle, bicycle ride throughout Tiverton and Little Compton, and some walk, we'll have walkers who utilize the track at Town Farm, and we have a cookout. So I'll have porta-johns in the north parking lot of Town Farm. I'll have an event tent adjacent to the baseball field at that north end of Town Farm, as we usually do. So we'll have a, probably about, we usually average around 100 bike riders spread across three routes, and we usually have about, yeah, 50, 75 walkers, and, you know, 25 or 30 volunteers that are helping me out that day, either out on the road as a road crew watching the riders, making sure they're safe and they don't need any assistance, or if they do need assistance, to assist them. And then just at the event, you know, crew cooking. I've got the, I have a food manager's license, so I'll supervise the cooking. I've contacted the Chief of Police. I've contacted the Tiverton Fire Department. The only thing I need to do still is to go online with the building inspector to fill out the application for my tent, because it is a 20 by 40 event tent. And I own it, but I still want to go through the permitting process with the, with the building inspector. It's not like I'm going to have a vendor in there. And we'll have our typical insurance, you know, I think it's $2 million liability that we usually get, and I'll provide that as soon as they allow me to purchase the, the policy. I'm not, they don't let me purchase the policy until about, I think it's about 60 days or 30 days before the event. Might be 60, but we, we always have it down here on time.
John and Chase have been doing this for four, four years now.
14 years.
And there's been no problem with this event whatsoever.
Yeah, we've been very lucky.
And they make a lot of money that they contribute, that you give to Hasbro, correct?
Hasbro, the Tomorrow Fund, individuals that are dealing with pediatric cancer, so we've done well. We've been, we've been supported by the community, by our friends, our family, and strangers. And right now, that, one of my biggest hurdles is keeping the account below the amount that requires me to get an accountant. Because I, you know, up to 100, I think if I stay below 100,000, I can just fill out a postcard. Like, I think it's like a Form 91, or my wife takes care of it. But I don't need to pay an accountant to do a whole rigamaroo.
You've done well.
We've, yeah, we've, we've done very well.
They have done fantastic for Megan.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've given away-
And I knew Megan.
Well over $150,000, maybe closer to $200,000. We're still almost, you know, probably 80 in the, in the bank.
That's amazing.
Yeah, yeah.
And Megan-
It's a completely voluntary.
Very proud of her parents.
Thank you very much.
She would have loved this.
Thank you.
And I knew Megan personally, so. Okay, any questions from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make motion, we approve the special event request from the Megan Alcudero Memorial Foundation for the 14th Annual Miles for Megan Bike Ride/Walk Event on September 24, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Good luck, John. I hope you're back.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
If Deb was here, she might have given you some physical therapy.
A good stretch and a chiropractor.
Good night. Appointments, resignations, discussion, and possible vote. So, it's the Dog Park Advisory Committee, 11 members, two-year term, 11 vacancies. We have seven people. Richard Siegel, 97 Myrtle Way, request reappointment, term ending 3/28/2024. Paul Inkin, 18 Olympia Avenue, request reappointment, term 3/28/2024. Joanna Kersman, 18 Olympia Avenue, request reappointment, term ending 3/28/2024. Melissa Quinnlin, 25 Garden Avenue, request reappointment, term ending 3/28/2024. David Paul, 175 Warren Avenue, request reappointment, term ending 3/28/2024. Kim Sutherland, 199 Fury Avenue, request reappointment, term ending 3/28/2024. Robert K. Sutherland, 199 Fury Avenue, request reappointment, term ending 3/28/24. I don't see anybody, oh.
I'm Richard.
Yes, you are. Okay. I knew you looked familiar, Richard. All right, so my only question, and Stu, could you come up here for a minute? And Richard, you can come up with Stu also.
They're being reduced to seven members, correct?
Right. That was their request.
So we're going, we don't, going down to seven members.
Down to 11, from 17 to 11.
Yeah, 11. That's right, 11.
But we only have seven right now.
So far.
My question was, the Dog Park Advisory Committee developed the dog park, and they did a wonderful job. I cannot say enough about what they've done, and I went by there today again, and there was a lot of dogs having fun. My question at this point is, what are their duties? Are they going to oversee the dog, because it's part of the recreation, correct?
It's been handled separately.
Right, but it's a recreation park now, and now that it's completed, and I think Chris needs to help me on this, who is really in charge of this?
Can I, can, when you say the word completed, we've got it open.
But it's not-
We still have some more work to complete it.
Okay.
And there's a few names, I guess, didn't make this list that you may have the paperwork. I guess it'll show up at the next meeting.
Yes.
So we have a lot of work still to be doing, and then there'll be maintenance.
Well, that, that's what I want to talk about. What I want to talk about is, yes, I know if you look at it, it's beautiful. It looks completed. I know David told me the other things that need to be done, but at some point at completion, who is in charge of this dog park?
So using Grinnell's perhaps as the example in this, I would assume that eventually it will transition over from a maintenance standpoint, but I also would offer that, to echo Richard's comments, I don't think they're quite at the point yet where we're looking to make that transition. So it's something that the two groups will discuss, and at the appropriate time, they'll talk about what next steps are, because recreation's not beating down the door to take over it. It's a phenomenal location.
I'm sure you're not.
And I do want, I do want to give them credit, because they have done an amazing job with it. I've been there three times since it's opened.
Right, but, but the purpose, and I looked up what the purpose of this committee was, and it's to develop the dog park and get, get it all set. And I know it's not done yet, but it will be done by the time these terms are ended.
Oh, yeah.
So what I'm really asking is who's going to be in charge of the maintenance, and what's going on there? Mike, I know you have.
I actually think we probably have to modify the town ordinance for, if we wanted to have the Recreation Commission in charge, or some other group, because it's listed within the town ordinance, which areas fall under rec, which areas fall under open space.
So what I'm thinking is, maybe not make the terms to 2024 right now, and do maybe a year, and then at that point, we evaluate what the dog park needs at that point, who's going to, because-
Then we can start discussions.
And then we can start.
Because, I mean, I don't want to throw on his plate more than he needs.
No.
Where maybe we could have, I don't know, expand some of the people you have, merge us into him.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think having involvement from those that helped make this a reality is crucial to going forward and to what that looks like. We can sit down and iron-
Right, because at this, at this meeting, we can't change the ordinance or do anything like that. But what I was thinking was maybe make the terms last, and reevaluate it a year from now, or maybe six months from now, once we look at the ordinance and maybe change it, and Dr. Stu, have David involved, have everyone involved, and see where we're going to go, but maybe change the date.
So there are a couple of things that, and I know it's a little bit off topic of the appointments, but rules and regulations need to be formed. Insurance was an issue that came up. I've actually reached out to the trust today to ensure that they're going to send a team down, they're going to evaluate it, they're going to look at it, they're going to put it on our policy, because if somebody gets hurt there, it's a town function now. It's, you opened it, it's, and believe it or not, I, I didn't think of it until the last minute either, and so, but there are those kind of things that, as you develop policies and procedures, the council's going to have to weigh in on them as to, is this what they really want as a council? So there, those kind of things that I think that to finish up where you're at. I know you still have benches and some other things that you're trying to, you know-
I saw the bridge today. It's really cute, the way the dogs are walking across the bridge.
There's some permitting issues that we need to get resolved.
Parking issues.
Parking issues is the main thing right now.
Crosswalk. I mean, there's a lot of things that need to be added, but I, I kind of agree with you in one aspect. One year would be more sufficient.
That's what I'm thinking.
Or to start discussion probably the three months before the end, or four months before the end, but down the road, and with you involved, because, I mean, it involves you obviously.
I mean, you could be, we could work it out where you're a subcommittee of the recreation and still be in charge of it, but we need to work this all out.
A bunch of turkeys. It's going to be part of recreation as, as we move forward. If it needs maintenance and those kind of things.
It's just another thing you're going to be in charge of, Stu, and I'm really sorry.
I've got to stop coming to meetings. No, I mean, I think there's, there's been a standing item on recreation's agenda to get feedback as to what's going on with the dog park, and they've been great, and Dave and Kim in particular have kept us in the loop, and so I don't think there's going to be any problem with us all communicating and finding something that works on a timeline that works. In a way, they, they're still direct, you know.
I have to tell you, it's a great set of volunteers. I was there for the opening. It's a very dedicated group. You need to keep them as part of your recreation team here. It's been an unbelievable project, and I really commend you because it's beautiful. It really is.
It's been a wonderful experience doing this, and, you know, I could honestly see working with them.
I go by there almost every day now just to watch it, because it's just fun to watch everybody there with, with their dogs, and you must be very proud, every single one of you. So, can I change it to 2023?
The agenda item is appointments, so.
So, okay.
I believe so.
I don't know if the rest of you agree with me that we can reevaluate, and it might, six months from now, we'll be in discussion, and-
Yeah, I wouldn't wait to three months before the end. That's probably too short a time, but we'll get through the summer.
But I'm sure once, and, and we have other issues that, that Chris is going to talk to you. I know that Mike, our attorney, I spoke to him yesterday, and we just want to make sure everything's done right, so the town's in no liability. All right, so.
And if you change it to one year, any people that put appointments in the paperwork, they're affected by that also?
We can't, we can't.
Okay.
What's better?
So, the resolution was already amended to go from 17 members to 11 members, and at the same time, the term was changed from one year to two years.
Oh, so we're going back to one now.
So, you can just disband the advisory committee after one year?
Yes.
Or whenever it's completed.
So you do two-year terms, but disband.
You can do two years, but, okay.
If I could offer, I mean, I think-
I just wanted everyone to realize what I was getting at.
And we also, I think, between recreation and the dog park, haven't sat down and talked about what are the next steps for collaboration, so it gives us an opportunity to sort that out and then come back to you.
So we'll go with the 2024 with, with the, with the knowledge that we're going to come back to this and change the resolution and make this perfect. So, okay.
So we have insurance right now?
The trust is well aware of it. They're, they're coming down to do an evaluation. We will be covered from here going forward. I just don't know what the policy's going to be yet.
So we're covered from the time it opened right now?
I'm assuming that at the moment. They haven't confirmed that, but they're sending a team down to look at it. They're aware of it. They know that we have it. So I'm assuming if something was to happen that today, we would be covered.
Yeah, it's-
So in principle, they-
They add it, they add it to our list of properties.
Well, I was curious, because I know that they don't insure the skate park.
So they didn't say no. They just said they would add it to the parcel, the parcel list that we have, the functional pieces, but they, they need to come down and evaluate it, so, which they are going to send a team down to take a look at.
And in the past, what they do is just give suggestions on how to make it safer, whatever, or to make our liability less.
Yeah, they did, they absolutely did that with the, the new playground. They came down, they did a full evaluation of it. They, it's added to our insurance, and they knew it as we were building it.
So if something terrible happened, what's covered, right?
I'm not going to speak for the insurance carrier at the moment. All I can tell you is that they said they add it to our list.
So it opened with no insurance?
Right. Well, I, I'm not sure if that's the terminology to use. Now, I, I'm not trying to be coy with you. I've notified the insurance company. They're well aware of the property. They add it to our property list. They're coming down to evaluate it. I don't know what that means until they come down and give me a full detail. I don't know what that means until they come down and give me a full detail as to what's going to happen with the policy.
So what are you suggesting, Donna, are we closing until we know?
I'm suggesting that this should have been in place before it opened. That's what I'm saying. It left us open to liability.
But now we have to look at it going forward, so.
It's still, to me, a problem.
And I would say that none of us on this council thought of it beforehand. So I think we all should have thought of that before.
One of us mentioned it.
Meaning we're talking animals.
Can you speak into the mic?
Animals are unpredictable. They're lovely and they're nice, but you never know what they're going to do. And we have no coverage.
Donna, can you speak into the mic, please? Can you speak into the mic?
Oh.
Okay, Joe.
There is also signage that says, "Enter at your own mess. Watch your dog," and it's silent. There is some kind of signage, right?
We do have signage up there, and we have rules. And there is a separate small dog, large dog side.
Yeah.
And there's going to be additional signage coming out sooner than later.
I know it says, you know, you're going to remain with the dog.
You're going to remain.
You can't leave in and out. And if there's an incident, you're supposed to call the dog officer.
It says something about, because I went there today, the owner's responsible for the action of their dog. I've been in and out of there, I'm not kidding you. Okay, so.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the seven of the 11 members of the Dog Park Advisory Committee for two-year terms ending 3/28/24, that being, and I'm not going to read the addresses, that being Richard Siegel, Paul Anderson, Joanna Christman, Melissa Quinlan, David Paul, Kim Sutherland, and Robert K. Sutherland.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Stu, you're the biggest property manager in town.
I think you can go home now. I don't think I'll be calling you back. I'll be calling...
You got another one? No, he does.
He's not done.
He really does have another one?
Yes, he does.
All right. I don't know, Stu. You're becoming a member of the council. General Business Councilor Edward Soler Ordinance Advisory Committee Discussion Impossible Vote to Extend Draft Solo Ordinance Submission Date from 6/13/2022, 8/1/2022, and Discussion of a Joint Meeting with Planning Board. Councilor Edwards.
So here I am, once again.
Lasting extension.
Hat in hand. As you probably all know, there's a lot to be done on this. And part of our problem is, we have 10 members, but it's summer, vacations, people are gone. Our average attendance is four, maybe five people at any one meeting. And all I can say is, we're working on it. Part of this request is, I would very much like to have the planning board review a draft before it comes to us, council, so that we do not have what happened last time happen again. So not that they're going to approve it, not that they're going to preempt what the council does. The consensus among our members was that we would very much like their opinion before we formally submit it.
All right, so my only problem with that is it has to go to the planning board anyway.
Oh, I realize that.
So once it comes to us, we have to send it to them. So this is like an extra step that I'm not sure is necessary because when we send it to them, they're going to give us suggestions, and we'll consider them. But I'm not quite sure, unless you wanted to have a joint meeting with us and the planning board in an open meeting. But, go ahead, Mike.
So as a non-voting member, I haven't been able to attend all, but two things. One, I appreciate the hard work that Jay has put into this, and I know Bill's a member, and all the other members have put into this. And Trish Hilton has put a tremendous amount of time and energy into researching. And I think the extension is a necessary extension, even without the question of them having a discussion with the planning board beforehand, before it comes to us. Because there's still some details that need to be worked out. And I think we agreed that one of the things when we devised this committee we wanted to make sure of is that we got it as right as possible, knowing that no ordinance is going to be perfect. But, I'm sorry, Jay, it won't be perfect. But we want to get it as right as possible.
It's like the 18th trial.
And part of the reason that the discussion with the planning board is here because there was some very good discussion among the advisory board members about their desire to at least pose a draft to the planning board and know if there's any big items that they're going to throw curveballs at the advisory committee to do. I think it's actually a good idea, but I did suggest that they at least inform us that that was their intent. I don't have a need to have a joint meeting myself with the three bodies. I think it's a proper discussion for them to have with the planning board separately, and then still, we would be still providing, getting an ordinance, deciding whether or not we felt it was ready. We may send it back to the advisory board, too. But at some point, having an ordinance that we feel is ready that we will send to the planning board so that they can clearly articulate, and I'm saying this out loud while Todd's here, clearly articulate based on what is in the... Based on each item in the statute that they have to report back to us on, that they cover in that report back to us, each item in that statute.
Well, that's my concern because last time was very vague, and it was problem solved. I don't, and of course, the planning board is part of this process, but I just want to make sure that it's productive for you, that that happens.
Yeah, well, so do I. But if we start to where we want to have joint meetings and all that, it's going to take a long time. Because of the interference with meetings and meetings on meetings.
Well, and here's my suggestion to that. You be in the driver's seat. So you plan when the meeting is and invite them to the meeting. You'll have to schedule it as a joint meeting if they're all going to be there, right? They'd still have to have a joint meeting?
Yes.
But you're in the driver's seat because you're getting feedback from them. You're not giving them something that they're going to act on at that point in time.
Well, that, yeah, that was one of the things I would do.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes. Jay has to keep coming back to us, and there seems to be problems with people having time off from this committee. I just think, why don't we just make it August 13? Give plenty of breathing room for them to do it.
That's our meeting, the town council meeting, then it would be submitted.
Yeah. That's why he picked August 1st.
Well, how do we make it closer to the 13?
Well, I mean, it's August 13. I mean, if he wants to make it...
I don't have a calendar in front of me.
If he wants to make it August 8.
I mean, he has to keep coming back and coming back.
August 8 will be our, August 9 will be our first meeting.
All right, so.
Is it August 9?
Yeah, so it's a week later. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So August 1st is, you think is okay right now? August 8 is obvious.
Well, I'll keep in mind that, you know, we want to be done, but this council is not going to receive the finished draft until the meeting, which is August 9.
Right.
So I'm not going to carry it into...
No, of course not.
On the first.
Well, you better get it on the agenda, though.
Yeah, I have to get it on the agenda, which would be the 6th.
Second, August 2nd.
Okay, there you go, August 1st, so.
Yeah.
I think that's actually why we looked at that thing.
The press have the backup like a Ford.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're being very strict about that, Tim. It's working out, so.
Denise, can I say something?
Of course you can.
So I am on the solo ordinance. And I think it was the intent of the people to get it right the first time back in December when we all met in that town hall meeting. This draft is very comprehensive, what we have so far. I've learned a lot. And I think we bounced a lot of topics back and forth, and we played devil's advocate in the rights of everybody that are concerned in the town. So I think that we have probably about four or five major topics left to discuss. And unfortunately, these topics take, you know, maybe two hours. There's an educational process they have to do with me, and then there's putting it in writing. So I think we're getting there. I think it's much different than what was proposed prior. But I think we're getting there, and I think it's optimistic, and I think it's something that the whole town will be proud of.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to extend the draft solo ordinance submission date from 6/13 to 8/1.
So moved.
Second.
I can second it. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Welcome back, Depp. All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So Town Administrator, Discussion Impossible Vote to Approve Budget Transfers.
So the fire department has a number of transfers.
Do you want me to read these?
Sure, you don't have to. I'll go through them if you want.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So on the first page, there are, Craig, there are four guys that we're hiring between now and July 1 to be prepared to take over the debit days. We need to outfit them with protective gear. So there is some transfers from base salary, from education allowance, and fire training to cover that protective gear, to cover those four men.
I think I met them today, right?
Yes.
Yes, I did, yeah.
We have some overtime that we're covering from the number of staff that we have not been able to fill. Those salary accounts are sitting there as salary. We've been backfilling them with overtime. We need to transfer those salary amounts in to cover that overtime. And then on the third page, we did the ladder training, and we didn't count originally when the first transfer was through for all the men that got trained. So this $6,000 covers the balance of the men who did get trained. So that's the rationale for the, and that comes out of the monies that you already appropriated for the ladder training.
Any questions for Craig?
That was easy, Craig.
I have to commend him because he's up, and he was up all night, and he's here today.
Madam President, thank you for those kind words for Joe. We'll give him the proper send-off, so that's for sure.
I know we will.
It's really a question for Chris. So the last item, that's our money.
Yep.
And that, okay, I'm thinking, so that is allowable to be used for personnel?
It is for the firefighter, for the training. It is allowed to be used for that. Because this was additional training so they could be certified to run that ladder truck, something we didn't have. It wasn't normal operations that were running.
Okay.
Craig, are the new guys trained on the ladder truck?
Yes, so we were lucky enough to get three guys that came that were lateral transfers. They've been through the academy. We have one that we're going to have to send through the academy that starts August 29. So we were lucky enough to get those transfers. Hopefully, they started today, and hopefully, we have them ready for July 1 to be on a shift. Yes, so.
And I met them today, and they seemed very enthusiastic.
Yes, yeah, we got lucky again.
It was a bad day for them to be here, but they seemed very enthusiastic.
They're ready to go.
Motion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the following budget transfers. $6,486 from account 3310-5101, fire personnel base salary to account 3310-7322, personal and protective gear. Second, $1,170 from account 3310-6922, education allowance to account 3310-7322, personal and protective gear. Item 3, $2,344 from account 3310-6928, firefighters' training to account 3310-7322, personal and protective gear. Item 4, $42,000 from account 3310-5101, fire personnel base salary to account 3310-5104, overtime. And finally, item 5, $6,486 from fund number 460, APRA ladder training to account 3310-5101, fire personnel base salary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
So get some sleep, if you can. Moving on to item C, Director Rogers, if you could join us. And if, who's ever going to take this, you or Chris? I'll take this. It's some transfers that Rick has. It's from DP maintenance workers from account 5540-5101 to 5540-7325 to highway signs for $4,000. Account 5530-6912 from landfill electric propane to landfill overtime. That's to account 5530-5104. 5540-5101 DPW maintenance workers from 25530-7611 to landfill gas, motor oil for $8,000. 5540-5101 DPW maintenance workers to 5500-6457 to recycling rubbish for $8,000. 5130-5180 maintenance seasonal labor to 5500-6457 for rubbish recycling service for $5,700. 5130 to 5180 maintenance seasonal labor to 5130-6690 for maintenance repairs, tires for $300. And 5130-5180 maintenance labor seasonal to 5130-7611 to gas, motor, and oil for $800. And I think Rick will speak to the majority of this. It's related mostly to fuel costs.
Any questions for Rick? Is everyone comfortable with these numbers?
I'm comfortable with numbers, but I take it we haven't got a seasonal labor yet.
We had two people pass muster, four people passed muster enough to get interviewed. No, five, I believe. Three of them didn't pass muster after that. Two of them were passed on to DPW. DPW contacted the two of them. One of them, we contacted three, maybe four times, never responded back to us. The one that looks good is willing, but he can't start work yet. But we hope he starts work this week or next week, so. So we didn't transfer all the money out this fiscal year, Jay, but we transferred some out.
Any other questions? I'd like to entertain a motion. I don't think we need to read it all because Chris did.
So moved.
So I'll take a yes in a second. No, 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 it's fine. Chris Brenham, is that all right with you? I'll check it with you, Joe. All right, so motions made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere you like, Stu. I'm going to keep you here. DPW Director Rogers, Discussion Impossible Vote to Award the Contract to Dennis K. Burke Incorporated for the FY '23 fuel bid unleaded gasoline and clear ultra sulfur diesel. It's kind of self-explanatory, isn't it, Rick?
Yes, thank you. The low bid was by Dennis K. Burke Incorporated. One thing that did come to light this fiscal year was unbranded versus branded. We talked to the different departments, did our own research also, and nobody objected to that. Either way, the low bidder was Dennis K. Burke. We're all scoring with unbranded versus branded gasoline.
Mike?
What does that mean?
Oh, I thought you had a question.
So it's not Sunoco, it's X gasoline? I grew up.
Let's expensive.
Yes, exactly, Mike. And if you read some of the literature, some of them add additives that they feel improve it, but we haven't found anything that substantiates that it's worth it.
So I just wanna make a note, two things. One, Mr. Burke is no relation to me, as far as I know, anyway. And besides, he spells his name wrong.
He did say that at the agenda meeting. All right. Any other questions for Rick? I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to award the contract to Dennis K. Burke Incorporated for fiscal year twenty-three fuel bid unleaded gasoline and clear ultra sulfur diesel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Rick, you're up again. DPW Director, I feel like I could talk about this concrete crusher every two months. Discussion and possible vote to advertise for the concrete crusher. Rental for FY twenty-three. We do talk about this a lot, Rick.
Yes.
I have to tell you.
And, and thank you for the last award, number two of three. On this one here, we could not come to an agreement with the current bituminous concrete crusher. Uh, we're very happy with those, all the services. He is happy to do the work for us, but the diesel price was way too much of a long shot. And in fact, what we did based upon some research is we implemented in the new bid document specifications a bid, a fuel adjustment factor such as we have, I mean, not exact, but such as we have for, uh, the trash hauling. So we did do that and we expect to get what we usually get, which is one bid returned year after year. That's, he's the only one who bids it, but it's competitive. It's an open advertised bid. But it's very specialized equipment. Not a lot of people have this.
Any questions for Rick? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion to advertise bid, bid two minutes, concrete.
You can never say that word, that's why.
Bituminous.
Bituminous, what he said. Concrete crusher rental for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion.
Soft coal.
Soft coal?
That's what it's been, soft coal.
Motion's been, well, we said we put it there.
Said the other.
Motion's been made in second. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you all.
I think we're done with you. Thank you. Town Administrator, discussion and possible vote to delay, to approve delayed other post-employment benefits, OPEP contributions from FY twenty-twenty-one, a hundred thousand dollars, and FY twenty-twenty-two, a hundred thousand dollars, for a total of two hundred thousand dollars from the American Recovery Fund.
So we had spoken about this back in February in March and we, I mistakenly thought that we approved those two years and we had talked about it probably twice and then we ultimately delayed the whole thing. Um, but when I was talking to Denise, she asked if there was a way that we could get this on the agenda so she could clean up fiscal years twenty-one and twenty-two so that when the orders come in, we can demonstrate that we've made the appropriate, um, contributions. So, and I didn't think that this would be an issue with the council because we had talked about it, had nauseam even before the money came in.
I really thought we did make the motion.
I did too and I actually watched the whole meeting over again and.
We did.
I could have sworn we voted here, but we didn't, so.
All right. So I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve contributions to OPEP for fiscal year twenty-one in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two for a hundred, uh, in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for a total of two hundred thousand from the American Recovery Fund.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
What?
There was further discussion, I'm sorry. Sorry, Donna, I didn't hear you.
Watch it.
I'll watch it, yeah. I'll be good.
Um, I agree with the hundred thousand dollars for twenty-twenty-one, but I, I made it very clear that I did not, uh, uh, agree with the hundred thousand dollars for this budget because it is part of operations, decided to, to make it look lower for the levy, and I disagreed with that. So I will be voting no for this whole thing because I don't agree with what we did with the budget.
Can I just make a point of clarification, Donna? And I, I'm not saying that you didn't do this because I do remember it, but it was for FY twenty-three. The budget that just passed was FY twenty-three's budget.
It, it matters to me because it looked lower than it should have. It should have been part of the budget and that's what I said at the time and I voted no.
Okay, but it doesn't have anything to do with FY twenty-two's number?
Well, it'll be no.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Any, anything else, Donna? No. All right. So I have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion?
So just one comment, just to Joe, because I know that you're concerned about this American recovery monies. The treasurer does keep a full spreadsheet on this for every item and it's fully accounted for separately than everything else that we do. So if there's ever a question, we can always back to the treasurer. I just wanted you to be aware that there is a full accounting of all of it, so.
All right. So, um, motion made in second. All those in favor? Opposed? Five-one. Recreation Commission, Stu, discussion and possible vote to approve funding for the purchase of a gatehouse for Fogland Beach using grant in American Recovery. But, so I'm looking at this and you want six thousand dollars from the Open Space Commission and sixty-six eighty-five from APRA.
Correct. So the grant that was received from CRMC from Open Space, which again, I commend them for the work they did on that, included funds for a new gatehouse and part of the rationale behind that, uh, for matching funds for a gatehouse. And part of the rationale behind that was the location of the existing gatehouse was the area that the grant was targeting for work, if I understand correctly.
That's correct.
So the intent from CRMC was to have us essentially move that gatehouse. Um, and we looked for a gatehouse that, one of the things that they had requested was that it would be movable. And so the one that we had found, ironically enough, based on where the request for the funds is coming from, was a COVID testing booth. Uh, and yeah. So, and it has the ability to be moved with a forklift in a particular place or time. So what we were intending to do is put it, when you drive into Fogland, on the left-hand side, there's the turnaround, right there, the first space. And the rationale behind that was because it's already disturbed ground, so it would be in line with what the CRMC we believe is looking for, um, and also could be moved again in the future and during the off-season. So the six thousand dollars would be coming from the Open Space grant. The, the remaining funds would be coming from that. And they would be putting security grates as part of that quote on the windows to secure it. So that was.
What's this gonna sit on?
Uh, it's actually the, the way they set, I don't have the photos in front of me, I apologize. It's actually, has a base to it.
You can't see that in the photo.
Like a wooden base.
Well, I guess you can.
There are two slots underneath that you can fit into or to lift it, but it's a pretty thick base on its own. So we feel like it probably, and, and in speaking with a couple of folks, we feel that it could probably sit just as it is without really needing to do much, much of fixture to it. Um, and Director Rogers and I have talked about where it could live during the off-season, whether it's, their town farm was actually, as we were looking at in the off-season, that it could live pretty easily.
Oh, so it wouldn't stay there in the winter?
No.
No, I, I don't think it probably would, but we would discuss where it would end up ultimately. Town farm just seemed like a viable location.
Yeah.
Is it made, it's made of metal?
It is metal, yep.
So how's that, how's that gonna do with the saltwater and all that?
So the, um, was a question that came up and we're fairly confident based on the duration of time that it's gonna be there, it won't be as big an issue. It's also the roofing on it is a plastic membrane. The roof is not metal, so we're not worried about it from that standpoint. Um, because I did have them take photos of the roof for me and it's, it's in very good shape.
You could say what's ever wanted.
Mike?
And, correct me, we actually discussed this coming from ARPA funds previously, correct?
You did. I put forward and, um, I unfortunately wasn't able to attend that meeting and your request was to get additional information on it, which is why there's the.
Yeah, it was the grant and.
Yeah, and I asked that because I think folks know that I've been asking for a process, but this was predating that request, so.
Any further questions? I'd like to entertain a motion. Um, we'll have to put the money in here, though.
How much is it?
So discussion pass, um, to approve funding, six thousand dollars from Open Space Commission, CRMC grant award, and sixty-six eighty-five in APRA funds, um, for the purchase of a gatehouse for Fogland Beach.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
Second.
Okay. Motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Something more for your portfolio.
I, I do have actually, like, when will we get this?
I'm gonna call them tomorrow.
[laughing]
What includes the delivery fee in that?
Right, I saw that.
Um, assuming, and I do wanna reconnect with the EPW just to make sure they're aware of us bringing it in, just, um, checking boxes, but my hope is that we could potentially have it in there by the time we open this weekend.
Great.
The, the gatehouse tends to be thrilled, so thank you.
Stu, I know I'm, I'm joking a lot about you, but I wanna thank you because you aren't taught.
Stu, whereabouts exactly is it gonna be placed?
Are you putting it close to the road? Are you moving up from the beach closer to the road?
Down towards the playground, right?
Uh, where the playground used to be. So that first turnaround in there where the land's already disturbed.
Oh, so you're bringing it down a little bit further?
Later on is when you're looking at moving it closer to Fogland.
Potentially, yeah. And one of the things, one of the things about is it's, the, the CRMC was pretty adamant about wanting it in a place that's not gonna disturb the vegetation, so this satisfies that requirement too.
All right, so, thank you. I know I make fun of you being here so often, but we couldn't do half the stuff we do around here without you. And I wanna thank you very, very much. And Rick, well, no, I'm talking about as a recreation, he does, he is in charge of half the land in this area.
I, I do wanna clarify that the dog park, while I appreciate being up here, I, and recreation, we're not directly involved with that. So I do wanna commend that particular group on the work they've done. So we're looking forward to working with them.
All right, thank you, thank you. [laughing] Counsel, look good. Follow-up discussion regarding letters sent to council by the town of Hopkinton regarding solar energy proposed legislation HB sixty-six seventy-six related to taxation levy and assessment of local taxes and their opposition. Donna?
Thank you. Um, this bill is an act to require cities and towns to assess renewable energy resources to be taxed at tangible property and the real property on which the renewable energy sources are located shall not be reclassified, revalued or reassessed except farmland, which shall be reclassified, revalued and taxed that are predated. Farmland classification, this act would take effect upon passing, would apply retroactively. The council was in support of a similar resolution, uh, in opposition to this by Hopkinton. Administrator Carter added that he was interested in how it would affect the net metering. I have asked, um, uh, the assessor, uh, Roberts, to please, uh, chime in on this to help us understand what the loss of revenue would be, how it would impact us, and to do a resolution, uh, to be sent in, in, in opposition to, uh, a House Bill sixty-six seventy-six. In the meantime, you have a copy of another bill, and I know it's not on here, but it's a relationship that was sent to me by Assessor Roberts that is, um, has an amendment to it that he thought was, uh, something that needed to be mentioned. So I don't know if that's allowed, so, but he was, he was going to explain what the difference was. And it's just like a sentence as far as the differences. Um, so the resolution that, um, that was, uh, put together by the solicitor, um, is here for us to sign on to, but I would like to hear from Assessor Roberts, um, this whole thing.
We can allow that, correct?
Is that?
Talking about the solar?
Yes.
Ornance?
Yes.
Same bill?
It, it's a, it's a different bill. I, I said, I, it, it, he sent it to me, said there was one, one amendment on it that it might be interested in, but, once again.
We can't vote.
We can't vote on it.
Right.
In support of a different bill, that's not.
That's.
No, 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 it's not to support it. I just wanted to know what the difference was.
To discuss it.
That was it.
Yes.
Absolutely. If that's okay with the council.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, so the original bill was House Bill sixty-six seventy-six. Um, that more or less died back in February. The bill sponsor withdrew or asked for a postponement. And I don't think that one's gonna really go anywhere because House Bill eighty-two twenty has more or less replaced it. Um, regarding sixty-six seventy-six, if that had passed, um, there is some taxation implication that we would feel. Uh, we would have to have issued refunds on taxes that some of these, well, both of the solar farms have paid into us. Um, a rough calculation is that we would have to refund them roughly fifteen thousand dollars. The replacement bill, I'm calling it a replacement bill, this eighty-two twenty, um, it's not retroactive and it would be based on the assessments as of this coming December. So there would be no refund checked to the solar farms. But as drafted, basically it would mean that the town of Tivon would lose roughly seven thousand, eight thousand dollars a year in tax dollars. Um, the, the amendment, eighty-two twenty, uh, sub A, it kind of clarifies a little bit of language, gets a, which gets a little wonky. Um, farms, if they convert less than twenty percent of their acres, in theory, they're not supposed to have any use change at all because it's less than twenty percent. There's no change of classification. Anything greater than twenty percent, you can then reclassify the land, um, at a different value. So the, the substitute A mentions that twenty percent. And it also stresses that there's not any refunds, that it's not retroactive and it will be effective December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
The solar farms, the two that we have right now, they have converted more than twenty percent. Uh, so there would be a possible use change as far as value. Uh, but also keep in mind, like, the wingover farm, uh, currently, they have a designation on there for forest land. You have to have at least ten acres. I believe the forests that they have right now covers roughly thirty. So they would still qualify for that. It's the land underneath the solar panels themselves that would be suspect to, you know, subjected to a change of value. There had been some discussion with some of these solar companies. In order to maintain a farmland designation, they would do, do like low crop, like strawberries or blueberries. Um, so they would still qualify for a farm designation although they have a solar farm field. Um, I'm not aware of anyone in the state right now doing this, but there had been discussion about that.
But they would still be required, and if they chose that option, to conform with the Right to Farm Act and all the definitions to go with what is a farm.
They, they would still have to meet the qualifications that DEM has set in their rules and regulations, uh, which is an annual affirmation that they are farming that property. They would have to have a conservation plan and they would also have to generate a certain amount of income on a yearly basis.
Which you, as a tax assessor, have to be able to verify.
Based on the documentation, yes.
And will the state cooperate with that?
Um.
Because they have it in the past.
Uh, yeah, they, they have not really enforced some of the conservation plans and such several years ago when I knew that there was an issue with some farms. Um, in my yearly annual affirmation, I do require submission of the conservation plan. Uh, so people have been complying. People who have not been complying, they have been withdrawn from the program.
Um, do you know what the?
But, but there's definitely a tax impact if this bill passes.
What, what, what is the, the motivation for changing something? For what motivation would there be except to cause the cities or the towns that have thought one way that it was a commercial change from agriculture to a commercial change to now having an assessed value lower? I don't understand the motivation except to, uh, except to cause the people to put this in to save money and the taxpayers then have to reach into their pockets.
I, I can't address the motivation behind it. I haven't talked to the bill sponsor.
I just, um, it's very questionable to me that once again, the taxpayer is told one thing and then it changes in mid-game to all of a sudden you're not gonna be making that, the money you thought you were gonna make on the acreage as a commercial area. So I don't know what the council wants to do. Um, I did, I did want, what, what do you wanna do? What do you think?
Well, I'm gonna have, Mike has his hand up. Maybe he has his attention.
Not necessarily. I have questions for Dave. Um, in a response somewhat, um, Donna, Art Handy, who's the sponsor on the House Bill eighty-two twenty that's before us, is a longtime environmental activist, um, and longtime supporter of solar. So I do not think, and I can't speak for him, that his motivation was at all to. for him, that his motivation was at all to take taxes away from cities and towns. Certainly, that's an unintended consequence, is, he's a big supporter of the legislation and the efforts to reduce climate change to the best that we can, so I imagine that's the big part of his motivation for this. My question is, and I couldn't find it while I'm looking here, are there Senate counterparts? Do you know, Dave?
Good question. There's not.
Okay. So, pretty much unless something happens at the very last minute, not saying we shouldn't do anything, but at the very last minute, it's likely that even if Rep. Handy's bill, which is, where did I put it? Was posted, is now posted again for 615 for consideration, this sub A, even if this goes forward, unless it's really a priority for the Speaker and the President of the Senate, it's probably not going to happen this year. But I'm not saying that should tell us not to do something, I'm just pointing that out.
So, what do you want to do, Donna?
I think we should be on the record as being opposed to this type of bill, whether it's, and make sure it says House Bill and Senate, if there's a Senate, so that we're, we're on the record, because you, things are put off, and then all of a sudden, 12:00 midnight, you're finding that someone's getting past that you didn't even know was on the, and that happens frequently.
I do have one other question. One other question, Dave. So, the language that says it can only be reclassified to whatever predated the farmland classification, most of these farms have been farms for generations, haven't they?
Right.
So, how would we determine that?
Yeah, and that's, that's a little concerning, actually, because some of that language, I'm not sure exactly what the intent would be, but i- if they're saying prior to the solar farm entering to a lease agreement and such, they want to go back to that prior value, we're fortunate only for the fact that these are fairly new. So, yeah, you would have to go back to that farm value, or whatever it was. And in a lot of these cases, you know, right now, in general, farms are being assessed at $300 in value per acre. You know, some of these properties, excess land could be $10,000 an acre, $15,000, depends on the location. So, yeah, that's basically saying you have to go back to that farm value, and you're right, most of these farms have been in the program for many years, so we would have to go back to that 300. But once we do that, then they would still have to qualify. So, you know, let's say that we do go back to that $300 per acre, based on that farmland designation, annually, they're still going to have to comply. And some of these, I'm not sure they would anymore.
Thanks.
So, Donna, was that a motion to, to oppose this?
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion that we follow through with the opposition to HB 6676, and if there's a Senate bill that comes up, we would be opposed to that also.
Could I suggest, Donna, that it be HB 6676 or any comparable legislation before the House this year?
Yeah, that's good.
And Senate.
Is this okay for a vote?
I'm okay with comparable, if someone
Because this isn't down for a vote. This is just down for a discussion.
Oh.
See, Mike Marcello would have picked that up. I'm just lying down.
A vote to have a resolution prepared.
Follow-up discussion regarding letters sent to
You have to vote on the resolution.
Okay.
So, directing the solicitor to create a resolution to that effect.
Right.
Yes, oh, okay. Okay.
That's how I interpret it, Mr. Viera.
Okay, good job.
Yeah, because he is
Yeah, okay.
All right, so motions been made. Has anyone seconded this?
This is for the resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has anyone
I'll second.
No, you made it.
Okay, I made the motion. And I'll second it.
You can't make a motion and second it.
To prepare a resolution in opposition to House Bill 6676 and similar Senate bills and others, similar, similarly or comfortably proposed. Good?
House and Senate.
Okay.
House and Senate. House and Senate.
All right, so motion's been made and seconded, and we screwed around with Donna's motion a little bit, but I think she's in agreement, correct? Okay, so motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Counselor Cook, updated results of the adoption of the resolution for coastal buffer zone to allow for agriculture and minimize conflicting uses. Discussion possible vote on resolution to support Bill 8244, continued from 5/23/22, and discussion possible vote regarding Rep. Edwards' suggestion and action for the council to pursue in letter. Donna?
Uh, thank you. Attached is Representative Edwards' letter to us.
Donna, can you speak into the mic, please?
Yep.
The reporter's trying to listen.
All right, go ahead.
Letter, letter to us that's giving us suggestions of doing 1, 2, and 3. So, Honorable counsel, we are in receipt of the proposed legislation concerning changing the distance from shore for the location of shellfish leases, and Representative McGaw and I have had the legislation drafted and submitted to the House cooperations for a hearing. I am not sure if there is a Senate companion. If one has not been drafted yet, I would suggest that the council request either Senator DePalma, first choice, as this directly affects his district, or Senator Philag, as both are retaining Tivonan and the redistricting takes effect on 1/123, to submit legislation on behalf of the town. They can use H-8244 as a model, number 1. Please note that the bill should be heard soon, as the legislative term is coming to a close shortly. Representative McGaw and I will need a resolution in support of this particular bill from the council, and the interim, I will use the resolution requesting the legislation as proof that the town is requesting it. Will the town be sending anyone to testify? I can't answer that, but they are asking. If the town is serious in this request, we would suggest that the town request letters of port from the towns of Portsmouth, Little Compton, Middletown, and Newport. If you need either of us to assist with these requests, please let us know. Finally, we will be amending the legislation in the committee as follows. Number 1, this change will only occur in the Sycodna River, too. This change will only affect licenses that are not already physically in place before the law takes effect. Number 3, it will establish a four- or five-year pilot program that CRMC can review, with the towns affected in the Rhode Island General Assembly. If this program has been effective in protecting the shoreline for our constituents' access and continue to allow commercial agriculture to grow, please feel to contact. So, we would have to answer to at least three things. What I have here, though, is the one request, is that he asked for a resolution, which I have in my hand, and everyone should have a copy, and I think Todd.
I do want to say that both, Mike and I have talked to Louis DePalma, and he is going to go forward with this. Senator Philag is out of the country for a little bit, so he, he's aware of it, he knows what's going on, and he is more than willing to bring this forward.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So, and Todd, thank you for your help.
Of course, as well as
I give him, I give him assignments.
As well as court chat. Wonderful edits.
Thank you. This is a resolution of the town of Tivonan's support of the House Bill 2022, House Bill 8244, relating to citing our agriculture leases, whereas the town of Tivonan supports House Bill 2022 H-8244, the bill, and any corresponding Senate bill, which would require citing of agriculture leases no less than 1,000 feet from the median high tide line. And whereas, the purpose of the bill is to protect access and use of coastal waters as guaranteed by the public trust doctrine, which is codified in Article 1, Section 17 of the Rhode Island Constitution. And whereas, the town has a vested interest in protecting public access and use of coastal waters, and to protect the rights of riparian landowners, and, whereas, the town of Tivonan recognizes the growing and inevitable conflict between the rights of access guaranteed by the public trust doctrine and the riparian rights of landowners, on one hand, and the need to accommodate agriculture and other uses of coastal waters in Tivonan throughout the Narragansett Bay. And, whereas, the town of Tivonan believes a 1,000-foot buffer zone from the mean high tide line extending into the coastal waters in which no future agriculture leases can be cited will minimize conflicting uses while concurrently maximizing all uses. And whereas, the town of Tivonan recognizes that the Rhode Island General Assembly and Coastal Resources Management Council have jurisdiction over the coastal waters of the state of Rhode Island and are entrusted with protecting the rights guaranteed by the public trust doctrine, and therefore have the authority to create the proposed protections through legislation or administrative rulemaking, and now, therefore, be it resolved that the town council of the town of Tivonan supports House Bill 2022, House Bill 8244, and any corresponding, corresponding Senate bill. Be it further resolved that the Tivonan Town Council respectfully requests the Rhode Island General Assembly to pass House Bill 2022 H-8244 and corresponding Senate bill into law, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to every Rhode Island municipality and Tivonan legislators and governor requesting their support for this legislation, as written.
And it's signed Dennis DiMaderis. So, we are going to correct that right now. Mike just pointed that out to me. Dennis DiMaderis. Okay, Todd, I'm becoming a Mike Marcello fan, too.
He's coming.
I'm kidding. But Mike just pointed it out to me, you're Dennis.
I caught that the last time. I didn't catch it this time, I apologize.
All right, so we'll mix it to the knees, and any questions, Mike?
Just a suggestion that we add in, that a copy be sent to the respective chairs of the House and Senate Committees of Jurisdiction, so in the House, it would be corporations, and the Senate, I believe this would fall under Environment and Agriculture.
We don't have a motion yet. We can do comments? Well, because Mike just corrected, so, yeah, go ahead. Do you have a comment?
Well, the only comment one I have, and I want to thank Representative Edwards for coming forward with this legislation. However, they had a hearing, and I watched it, and this bill that was presented came with some caveats, and they're part of the letter that's attached to this. And one of the caveats was that it would only apply to the Sycodna River watershed.
There was something else, too, though?
Yeah, I wrote it down. Let me get my ducks and roe here.
It's new, right?
Huh?
New?
And, oh, and it had a four-year, four- to five-year pilot program, which is not at all what most of the stakeholders that were opposed to these things had in mind. It makes it seem like this bill is a not-my-backyard bill. It's excluding just a small area and doing a pilot program there with a wait-and-see attitude. That's what I don't like about it. The rest of it I like, but I have a problem with that portion of it. And when this was presented at the hearing, and Representative Edwards said, oh, but there were going to be amendments, he was asked to provide those amendments at the earliest opportunity, but they weren't presented at that time.
But he didn't present amendments since then, no?
Not that I've seen on
That's what he, well, that's what he
This was a meeting like three days ago.
Oh, okay. So, he didn't.
So, the hearing, last hearing was held on June 7th.
Yeah.
So, if amendments were requested, they have to draft those amendments. Legislative council has to draft those amendments and
And he told them what they were going to be.
But they have to see the actual language, and then it comes back before the committee for discussion. My guess is, without watching it, is he knew nothing would pass without those compromises.
Could be. It might be politically motivated, I don't know.
So, it was June 7th?
June 7th was the last
Yeah, I think he called me that night and told me that there was amendments that he was writing. Yeah, it was, it was June 7th. All right, so do I have a motion?
Well, what do we do? We don't have the amendments.
Well, the motion would be to send this resolution, unless you wanted to wait to see the amendments, but this would move it forward.
Yeah, I guess we need to go forward.
Yeah, so that's what the motion would be.
Okay.
And then would add Mike's comment to it.
Yeah, which was that we also send it to the chairs of the respective committees of jurisdiction, being the House corporations and, I believe, Senate, Environment and Agriculture.
And how about Sam?
Ooh.
Who?
Sam?
Sam? Oh, that's fine. Yeah. You might want to send it to CRMC. I mean, it doesn't limit who we send it to, it just directs who we send it to.
Okay, so the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion remain in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Is that it, Donna? Yes, right?
Thank you, counsel.
All right. Counselor Burke, you wanted to table this, you know?
So, thank you, Chairman Chair. I do want to give an overview, but I do want to ask that we continue this until our next meeting. The FTR Personnel Charter Changes Subcommittee met today and reviewed the documents that you have in your packet and found some inconsistencies in relation to, ah, here we go, some of the citations.
Todd's going to get mad at us.
Those are slippers on the door.
We've been really abusing Todd for the last half hour now. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, in looking at the documents that were prepared, first off, this, the changes that you see, and you'll, you can tell by what you look at, affected several different sections of the charter. So, it was a yo-person's challenge of making sure that we crossed the i's and dotted the t's, and Mike and his staff did a good job at that. At the same time, as with anything like this, we found some inconsistencies that I've not had a chance, at least what looked like inconsistencies to us, Mike wasn't able to make today's meeting, so I want to have a chance to discuss those with him and one other possible change. But if I may, I just want to talk about what the major changes are. So, there, this suggests two questions, and one question relates to changes to the FTR process and the budgeting process for the town, the major components of which are, one, it shifts the budget approval process from a financial town referendum to the town council, while still providing that voters have an opportunity to override the council's decision through a financial town referendum process, so it modifies what that process is. It requires that, again, these are all proposals, that the school committee, clerk, and treasurer submit their budget proposals to the administrator, the administrator then takes that and develops and submits a proposed unified budget to the budget committee. From there, the budget committee reviews, does the same kind of work that they do now, and submits and proposes a unified budget back to the, to, to the council. The council then reviews, modifies, and finally adopts preliminary unified budget, and when we say unified budget, I'm sorry, that means all the budgets combined, so the clerk, treasurer, municipal side, and school committee. So, the council reviews, modifies, adopts a preliminary budget. From there, a public hearing is, is set, we hold a public hearing, get the feedback from voters. If we decide we want to make modifications, we can do that based on that feedback and any further information we have, but by the end of June, the council will adopt a final unified budget. From that point on, when the council, and there's a set time, set of timelines for all this in, in the document, voters will have a chance to put in proposals, they'll be using a format provided by the clerk, they will be required to get at least 500 elector signatures, which is very similar to our special referendum process, actually a little less than our special referendum process that's in the charter right now. So, that's the first question, question, what we call question 3, because So that's the first question, what we call question three, because we already talked and approved questions one and two for the personnel component. Question four is based on the recognition that for the past several years, several election cycles, actually, so multiple, more than several years, we've had a real challenge in getting people to run for the budget committee, and even getting people who want to be appointed to the budget committee, for whatever reasons. So we, the committee proposes that an 11-member budget committee is too large, and suggests that it be reduced to seven members, still elected members. So those are the, that's the gist of what's before you. This will give you some extra time to kind of walk through this. I will tell you, there will be no significant changes to what you have before you, other than we may be addressing, and I have to talk with our counsel, the special referenda section, just because it is based on the current financial town referendum process. So we will be looking at that piece. But other than that, I want to thank Joan, Jay, Denise Saret, Chris is non-voting, Michael is non-voting, for their work. This was a tedious process, but I think we've come to some good recommendations.
Okay. So we'll put this on the next agenda.
Yeah. Do we need a motion to continue?
Do I need a motion to continue this to the next agenda? Todd, you can answer this.
I'll say yes.
Motion to continue...
We've got to listen to Todd right now. Because we need to...
Motion to continue the discussion of possible vote to set a public hearing date on the proposed charter amendments for Article III Financial Town Referendum to approve funds to advertise a public hearing until our next meeting in January, I'm sorry, June, which is June 27th. And we must have it that night.
So I have a second. Motion been made in second. All those in favor? Against? Opposed? Okay. Five, one. All right, that's the end of the public session. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed executive session. Town Solicitor, Rhode Island General Law, 4246582, litigation update on case number PM 2022-02436, Twin River Tiven LLC versus Town of Tivon, buying through David Bobbitt, RICA as tax assessor. Town Administrator, Rhode Island General Law, 4246585, discussion impossible vote on the disposition of publicly held property in the Tiven Industrial Park. Town Solicitor, Rhode Island General Law, 4246582, general update on all pending litigation. Town Solicitor, Rhode Island General, 4246582, litigation update on case number NC 2021-0201, North Borrow Realty Holdings LLC versus Tivenon Zoning Board of Review, sitting with the Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I, I'm going to say, motion in second. All those in favor? Councilor Cook?
Oh, yes.
Council Janet?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
I'm yes.
Yes.
All right, we're now going into executive session after about a five minutes.